In a world where loyal companions await, one place stands as their beacon of hope. The Pet Resource Center of Hillsborough County, where you can adopt your very own superhero. Adopt a dog, find your sidekick, and unlock the power of unconditional love. Suit up, show up, and adopt today. For more information, visit hcfl.gov/pets. In a world where loyal companions await, one place stands as their beacon of hope. The Pet Resource Center of Hillsborough County, where you can adopt your very own superhero. Adopt a dog, find your sidekick, and unlock the power of unconditional love. Suit up, show up, and adopt today. For more information, visit hcfl.gov/pets.
Well, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the Hillsborough TPO meeting of September the 2nd. Okay, everybody's fired up. We're just coming off a three-day weekend. It's like organizing the class the first day of the year. So, welcome back to everybody. It's good to see everybody. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. DeSiano, would you please call the roll?
Ross.
Here.
Wostel.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Cohen.
Yeah.
Bulls.
Here.
Clendenon.
Here.
Hertak.
Here.
Carlson. Mayor Kilton is absent. Gray.
Here.
Klug.
Here.
Michael Stevens.
Here.
Frey. Hartfield.
Present.
Joseph. You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you, Ms. DeSiano. Just for the record, Mayor Kilton did contact us. A conflict came up, and so he has an excused absence. And I believe Justin Hall from DOT is absent also, but we do have a DOT representative here if we need them, so.
And just for the record, Greg Slater is here as well. Berthea.
Thank you.
Good, very good. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from December the 3rd?
No move.
Second.
Any adjustments or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays. Nobody signed up for public comment, however.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Can you please tell me who the motion was and the second?
Mr. Stevens made the motion, and who seconded it? Commissioner Meyer seconded it. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There are no people signed up for public comment. However, we do have some advance comments that will be read by Harmony McGee from our TPO staff.
Good morning, Harmony McGee, TPO staff. We received one public comment pertaining to the long-range transportation plan, which was recently amended from Jamie Jones, who also shared this with the city of Tampa and the Planning Commission related to the comprehensive plan update. Related to the TPO work products, their feedback emphasized that Tampa should consider redevelopment along major roads as a strategy to improve how transportation systems function. By replacing surface parking lots with denser housing and businesses and changing associated driveway access, transit ridership can be better supported. Traffic flow could improve, and there could be better support for a fixed route transit line, such as one connecting the airport, Riverwalk, downtown, and Ebor. The comments are also stretched that this approach would only be effective if the comprehensive plan is aligned with the long-range transportation plan, ensuring that land use decisions and transportation investments reinforce one another. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Our next item is an action item, is TPO bylaws amendment. Dr. Wong.
Thank you, Chair. I'll lead this from my seat so that we can move through it quickly. I'm here to provide an overview of some bylaws changes that we're asking you to approve. As a reminder, bylaws amendments require two-thirds vote of the entire voting board, and that's on the first reading. If you all approve of the changes, we'll bring it back in October for a second reading to be approved via consent. The reason why we're bringing this bylaws amendment to you is that it's been about 10 years or even longer since the bylaws have been thoroughly reviewed. Our goal with this scrub was to clean it up and ensure that the bylaws are consistent with the standard operating procedures that have changed over the years. As each, as some of the procedures have changed incrementally over the years, we've noticed that they're now very different from what they looked like in the bylaws. Throughout, you'll see minor additions, deletions, and modifications to either add clarity, reduce redundancies, or provide definitions for key terms. There are also a few substantive edits that have been pointed out in the write-up to this amendment, to the, to the action item. Specifically, Section 5.2 of the bylaws, we're proposing to modify the schedule of standing committee meetings to provide flexibility to each of those committees. The current language in it states that with the exception of this, with the exception of ITS and the TD Board, all other TPO advisory committees meet monthly. That is no longer true, and over the summer, I had an opportunity to have one-on-one meetings with the committee chairs of all the advisory committees. Specifically, LRC and the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee wanted to explore going to a bimonthly meeting schedule. Ultimately, the LRC voted not to have bimonthly meetings, so their schedule will remain the same through 2026. The B-PAC did take action to support a bimonthly meeting schedule for 2026. The language in the bylaws will be amended to provide flexibility to account for these changes moving forward. Specifically, it's going to be modified to read that the committees shall meet pursuant to the adopted TPO calendar to provide flexibility to each. Second substantive amendment is to add language allowing standing committee meetings to be rescheduled administratively due to emergency cancellation or postponement. That's consistent with the Public Participation Plan policies that will be brought forward to you later this month. The last substantive edit is to modify the quorum requirement for the TD Board from a simple majority of non-vacant membership to nine members. The reason for the proposed modification is because at its June meeting, the TD Board did not meet quorum. Not being able to meet quorum, they weren't able to take action on the Transportation Disadvantaged Service Plan. The Transportation Disadvantaged Service Plan is a task that the TPO staff take on each year. We complete that using our planning funds, and then we seek reimbursement from the state. Because it wasn't voted by the, because it wasn't taken action on by the TD Board, we weren't able to seek that reimbursement, so the TPO had to eat the cost of that this year. And so, in order to give us more opportunity to meet quorum and avoid issues like this moving forward, we propose that the TD Board reduce their quorum from a simple majority to some number. We settled on nine, which would make it consistent with the LRC and the B-PAC. I'll pause there and ask if anyone has any questions. There is a markup version of the bylaws in your packet. Does anyone have any questions about specific sections?
Board members, any questions for Dr. Wong? Councilmember Clendenon.
Aye, good morning. Question, I was looking, trying to find the clarification we had previously talked about, reference virtual meeting participation. Was that language added?
Yes.
Councilman, yes. Let me try to find where it is.
I'm looking at 6.2.
I believe that is Section 6.1, Excusal from Meetings.
Oh, there we go.
Each member who knows that his/her attendance at a regular, special meeting, public hearing, or workshop will not be possible shall notify the director or committee support staff of the anticipated absence and reason thereof.
So, no, my question was about being able to vote, virtually vote.
6.2, Virtual Participation was a section that was added earlier in the year. TPO Board members are required to attend meetings of the Board in person, and then there are provisions for how virtual votes would be allowable under certain circumstances, namely extraordinary circumstances like medical. Meeting conflicts are not, meeting conflicts do not allow for virtual voting.
Okay, so, I don't know if it's appropriate during, during this process, but at some point, I would like to amend this, because this sounds high-schoolish to me, that as long as there's a physical quorum, that virtual participation and voting should be allowed. So, you know, you shouldn't have to bring in a doctor's excuse.
That's actually, that's inconsistent with state law and Sunshine meetings, though, and actually, this policy, we brought this up, you had, actually, after the last TIP meeting, you'd requested a policy, and this was the one that was adopted at that time. It is consistent with Sunshine. There is, physical attendance at meetings is really the requirement under Sunshine law. There are agey opinions regarding virtual participation. The only circumstance that is regarded as an extraordinary circumstance almost universally is medical reasons, health or medical reasons. There is a provision added for conflicts, but the Board would have to take a vote on that. It's, absence for convenience is not one of the circumstances, and it would depend on the conflict, I would suppose, but there is a provision to allow for that, but it's, it's discouraged, I would say, by state law.
I understand, and I think, I get that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, maybe we can sit down and talk about it and go through everything and see how, how we can make a better, realistic policy for 2025. Thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Wong concerning the bylaws updates?
Board members almost forgot to point out the last substantive edit. My apologies. Section 4.2.6, there's a substantive deletion of a seat on the TAC that is reserved for the Tampa Bay Area Regional Transportation Authority. So, you see how long it's been since we've updated the bylaws. TBARDA became the Transit Authority in about 2018, I believe, and since then has, well, ceases to exist, so we're going to delete the seat for that entity. And we're also proposing to add a seat for Hillsborough County Children's Services. Our hope is that Children's Services will offer another pathway for us to build relationships with the 18 and under demographic and then engage them in our planning studies moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Wong.
And so, we are seeking action today. Bylaws amendment, as I mentioned, requires two-thirds of the voting majority, which would be 11 on this board.
Thank you, Dr. Wong. Any additional questions since he added to his presentation? If not, Mr. Clark, I'm assuming since there's a threshold, it'd probably be best to do a roll call vote?
You could do it that way, certainly. That would be a way to be certain.
Since there's a threshold, okay.
Need a motion to approve?
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Okay.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Cohen, and a second by Mr. Hartfield. Any discussion of the motion? If not, Ms. DeSiano, would you please call the roll call vote?
Ross.
Yes.
Wostel.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Bulls.
Yes.
Clendenon.
Yes.
Hertak.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Klug.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Hartfield.
Yes.
Motion carried 14 to 0.
Thank you, Ms. DeSiano. Next discussion is travel options for the Metro Plan Orlando Field Trip. Dr. Wong.
All right, thank you once again, board members. I'm up at the podium because I do have slides for this item, short as they may be. So, a little bit of background, in mid-November, Hillsborough TPO staff will participate in a peer exchange, or I'm sorry, this is the wrong one. On October 27th, TPO Board members were invited to participate in a peer exchange with other elected officials serving on the Metro Plan Orlando Board. Metro Plan Orlando is one of the MPOs in the state of Florida that serves a multi-county region, and we thought it would be a great opportunity for you to meet with your peers and ask them any burning questions that thus far you have not been able to get answers to, specifically how the governance structure is working for them, whether the small cities' municipal advisory committee provides them an opportunity, and whether those small cities in the tri-county region feel well represented, and then, you know, have kind of like open, open forum for you to interact with your peers on a more personal level. Last month, I brought this up in my executive director's report with respect to the Tampa Bay Partnership offering to charter a bus for transportation. Thus far, we have about 30 confirmed attendees from Pinellas, Pasco, and Hillsborough. That's elected officials as well as staff who will be making that field trip over to Orlando. The, the thought being, let's make this an easy trip, charter a bus, we can all ride together. Sunshine laws would need to be followed. However, in the conversation at last month's board meeting, some concerns were raised about the optics of having an advocacy org sponsor this trip. So, my team and I went back to the drawing board, came up with a few different options for how we can organize travel. The key, key factors you need to know in, in making your decision are that we have approximately 30 travelers from Hillsborough, Pasco, and Pinellas making that trip. 10 to 12 board members and staff will attend from Hillsborough. We're gonna depart from Tampa at 8:00 and expected to return approximately 5:00 PM pending traffic. The options on the table, I've ranked these by cost to the Hillsborough TPO. First is a bus charter by the Tampa Bay Partnership, which would be $0 cost to the TPO. We explored an option to procure a passenger bus from either PSTA in Pinellas or HART. HART responded back to us and said liability prevents them from renting us a bus for the day. We could carpool using Planning Commission vehicles. That would be a very tight squeeze, but at zero cost. Currently, the agency has three vehicles, which concede a total of 12. We are trading in two of those vehicles for an excursion or an expedition. Not exactly sure which model, but that would mean that we have two vehicles and spacing would be pretty tight. Next option is that we could rent a full-size van through the county. The provider would be Hertz, I believe, at a cost of $115 plus gas. And then, the last option is we could each drive separately. I'll end my conversation there. What I'm asking for the Board is to direct me with the two best options, which options you would like me to pursue and make arrangements for. I'll leave this up on the screen while you discuss.
Thank you, Dr. Wong. Board members, Commissioner Cohen.
I just want to say, my inclination actually probably just be to drive separately or arrange our own transportation, but I would mention that, you know, the Board of, the Board of County Commissioners has access to a vehicle. If there's commissioners that wanted to ride over that way, I'm sure that'd be appropriate, but I just assume not make this complicated.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller?
I agree with that. I think driving separately is probably.
Can you turn on your microphone?
There we go.
Sorry. I believe, I mean, I agree with Harry, Commissioner Cohen, that driving separately is probably a good plan.
Okay. Board Member Gray.
Yes, I, I think the, the individual car trip is a safer, secure way of not getting involved with Sunshine laws, breaking them in any way, shape, or form, so I'll be driving privately. Thanks.
Board Member Hartfield.
I echo the sentiments of the board members. One, the optics. Two, liability. And finally, the increased level of scrutiny that boards and state, county, local organizations are enduring at this time. So, I think probably bright, taking our own private vehicles is the best option.
Dr. Wong, I do have a question regarding this. It seems like the Board seems to be leaning one way. However, if there are board members who wish to, or maybe don't have the ability or don't want to drive themselves to Orlando, could they work with you and utilize the county vehicles that we referenced, and maybe a small group of board members might choose to choose that option? Would that be available if that were the case?
Yes, Chair, and board members who intend on coming with us on the field trip, that option remains on the table. If you'd like to carpool, we can make arrangements offline and get you seated in the new excursion, take the inaugural trip.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
So, board members, we would have, if those of us who want to drive ourselves can just drive ourselves to Orlando, but if there are board members who wish to, we could coordinate with Dr. Wong and take a county vehicle? And if that is the Board's preference, I think we, we need a motion for that, or is just a?
Mr. Chair, could we also, maybe you could, we could actually arrange for parking when we're there. That would be helpful. If that's, I'm not sure who's hosting it, but that would be, make it very enticing.
Yeah.
Commissioner, yes, let me check back in on the meeting logistics. It wasn't the intent to have conversation about the logistics of the day. However, each MPO director, Pinellas, Pasco, and myself, I believe, are going to pay for lunch for everyone, so you don't need to come, you don't need to bring your wallet unless it's just with your driver's license. We are working with Metro Plan to make parking arrangements. They have access to a public parking garage in downtown. It's about a block away from their building, and of course, anyone who attends is welcome to leave at any time. You're not locked in, especially if you drive yourself, you'll preserve that option to peel away if you have a conflict.
I saw, was it Councilmember Hertak or Clendenon? I saw somebody.
In case Commissioner Cohen didn't get to that, I was gonna ask the same question. And verify the meeting starts at 10:00 AM?
Yes, Councilman, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we need a formal motion on this, or does it just head non-sufficient, Mr. Clark?
It's showing as an action item, so leave the discretion of the Board. It sounds like everything's gonna happen the way you've just described without a vote, but it's in the action section, so you can vote, and it doesn't obviously require roll call, so.
Okay. So, if this is the wishes of the Board, is there a motion that we? Board Member Gray.
Motion.
Well, you might want to describe the motion a little bit, since we've had discussion on it.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I make a motion for the, the Board to be able to drive individually to this particular meeting.
Very good. Board Member Gray, is there, should, I think, Board Member Gray, if it's your intent, I don't want to recraft your motion, but there was discussion of the, any board members who want to utilize a county vehicle.
Along with that is the, up to the discretion of individual board members if they would like to have a van or another type of vehicle to transport more than one person.
Planning Commission vehicle.
A Planning Commission vehicle.
Very good. So, we have a motion. Commissioner Cohen, do we have another second?
Sure.
Okay, so, motion by Board Member Gray, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays. Very good. Thank you, everybody. Couple of status reports. We have an advanced air mobility test flight, and Gina Dew, our favorite TPO alternate, is here from the Aviation Authority to explain. Good evening, or good morning.
Good morning. I'm excited to present to you guys a little bit on the work that we've been doing on advanced air mobility and how some of this work led to our test flight that many of you attended two years ago, and kind of where we're going from here. So, as you guys know, Tampa Bay is the birthplace of commercial aviation, so innovation is in our blood. The first commercial flight ever was from downtown St. Petersburg to downtown Tampa. And this legacy of Tony Janis really inspired then Joe Lepano and Michael Stevens to encourage us to wrap our arms around this emerging technology. We were also the world's first people mover system. It wasn't Disney, it wasn't in Shanghai, it was here in Tampa International Airport when we opened in 1971, developed by Westinghouse. The importance piece on this slide is the three general aviation airports. So, we have a system of airports. You guys are familiar with this slide, but that really, that four airports that then create a opportunity to connect potential passengers between different locations through Hillsborough County. As always, the number one goal for the airport is a safe and efficient integration of any technology into our, into our space. So, as you guys all remember, when the TNCs became an issue a couple of years ago, we had to make sure that they were paying us because our federal mandates are there. And so, whether it's TNCs or whether it's this emerging technology, we wanted to make sure that we are protecting the utility of the airports. Our master plan happens every five to 10 years as mandated by the FAA, and it looks forward to where we're going to be for 20 years. We were the first airport in the country to integrate advanced air mobility into our master plan process. And so, what this looked like was site selection, airspace and operations, infrastructure and utilities, as well as community and stakeholder engagement, which, that's part of the test flight, was stakeholder and community engagement. You all know, I don't have to explain it to you, seeing is believing, and people, the public, we need to see technology, you want to experience, you want to be able to see how it's gonna work firsthand to really become those early adopters to it. With that, we created an Advanced Aviation Technology Committee. It's co-chaired by Brett Fay, who manages our three general aviation facilities, and myself. And you can see, we have a whole host of other departments on there, including at the end, ARF, which is our firefighter, which we contract with the city of Tampa for. The reason why fire was so important to us is that these things are electric, and so when you think about putting out a traditional fire at an airport, it's a jet fuel and all those other things, these are an electrical fire. So, you think about what happened in Jacksonville with a parking garage, now put that with this type of advanced air mobility technology, it's a little bit different than a traditional aircraft fire. In order to get the most information, we set up an industry day where we. In order to get the most information, we set up an industry day where we, where we invited the top vertiport companies, as well as the top, um, operators and manufacturers in the industry, to come in for one-hour virtual meetings. And these were not their sales pitches. They had a list of questions that they were to answer to us that then informed our master plan processing so that we can understand what their business models look like and how that factors into our business case. Key takeaways were preference for agnostic facilities. At the time, one of the OEMs and one of the vertiport companies were act, were actually entered into an exclusive agreement, and that would not have worked for us. We're only on thirty-five-hundred acres. And so highest and best use of our land, um, is mandated by the FAA, but means a little bit more to us when you are very space constrained the way that we are. As well as, um, vertiport site locations, as you can imagine, all the operators wanna be on top of our parking garages because of the access to the gates. And but because of the parallel runways, that is going to be very challenging when this first, um, goes into the airspace. You know, we, we wanna decongest TPA now, you don't wanna be holding up Lufthansa for a Cessna. You certainly don't wanna be holding up Lufthansa for an advanced air mobile, uh, mobility vehicle. So really figuring out how that will work within the airspace, as well as integration with the airport with access to the terminal. The two use cases that we looked at were passenger transport and cargo transport. You see two examples there of Archer Aviation, whose CEO is actually from Tampa. He's actually a graduate of Chamberlain High School. And, um, Beta, which is, um, the cargo transport, they are entered into an agreement with UPS. So that would integrate very smoothly with us since we have UPS already on our campus. At the end of the day, we looked at these, um, eight different sites. And again, the operators really wanna be in the, in between those parallel runways. But where we ultimately landed were the two sites, one and two, which are over by our existing general aviation facilities. This provides access not only to the airport, but also to the roadway system around us because not necessarily everybody connecting to the airport is going to be connecting onto a flight. A lot of these operators have entered into an agreements with the airlines. So if you live over in Pinellas, or you live up in Pasco, or you live over in Polk County, you can purchase your airline ticket on like American Airlines with this transport included into it, and then become to the airport all on one ticket. These were the two sites for Tampa Exec. We see that the Tampa Executive Airport would be another great location for this. As you all know, um, there, that area is growing very fast with the Motor Speedway and also the, um, the Seminole Hard Rock, and as well as just that I-4 corridor. We see this is also being used for emergency cases. So you think about, um, post hurricane where you can bring in relief, or you can bring in supplies and all these things using these advanced air mobility, um, technology where, again, the county already uses pieces of that airport for their staging for emergency response. This leads us to Florida's first public test flight. We were the first major airport in the country and the first, um, public test flight in Florida with Volocopter. We invited three hundred of our closest friends. I know many of you are also there. And we see this really as not just, you know, again, that public case, but also building that case for Hillsborough County. We, um, at the time, were talking to Volocopter, who we had done the test flight with, about potential manufacturing at our Plant City Airport. We had the school district there because there's going to be a lot of training with this. And so the flying of them, the maintenance of them, all of those things are going to be different than traditional aircraft. We invited Hillsborough Community College, again, the Tampa Bay EDC. We invited partners from all around the region to come and experience this, again, to just kind of build up this whole idea that this is coming and our region should be prepared. We have also been working with the Florida Department of Transportation. They have been huge partners, and in fact, FDOT is probably the furthest, um, state transportation agency in the country out on this. Um, the statutes are actually up to date for zoning for vertiports and certification, which I think we were the first state to do that. And we also did the first tabletop exercise, which would go through the sighting of the, an actual vertiport. And we had people from local governments, we had the FAA, we had FDOT all approving that site facility here at the airport. And now I'm gonna show you guys a short video of what that test flight actually looked like that day. Let me get the. Oh. The video's not playing?
There's no way to play the video right now.
Okay, so, sorry, there's no way to play the video right now, where it actually goes in the sky. I'm sorry. So, um, it was a fun day, and basically it talks about how this was, um, a very transformative day, again, for the, for Tampa Bay. And we had, um, again, we had a lot of elected officials there in the state, and it was incredible to actually see it go into the sky. Wish you guys could see the video. I did not know it was not working. So with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dew. Board members, other questions? Yes, just place your.
Have they given you any metrics on like average cost per ride for this service? I'm assuming they're operating in other places already, right?
They're not, so they're not certified yet. So twenty-twenty-seven will be when they're certified, but the average cost will be about the same as an Uber Black. In fact, um, since I blessed put this presentation together, Joby just actually purchased Blade Helicopter. If you guys are familiar with Blade up in New York, so it'll be about the, the cost of an Uber Black.
Not to be a boomer, but I don't know how much that costs. I've just never Uber. Do we know?
So, it'll be about a hundred and fifty dollars for four people.
Okay, thank you.
Board members? Uh, Councilmember Carlson.
Just following on, uh, what Commissioner Wassell said, um, I, I was just in Dubai a month or two ago, and I thought we could take the service there already, but it's not available until like November. And so is, is that gonna be the first one, or where is the first one gonna be? And, and how will we know that it's okay and safe before we would start?
So Dubai will be certified before, um, the companies here in the United States. And the FAA will not put anything in the sky that is not safe. And so that's, certification has, um, stalled a little bit, um, it's delayed. It was, they were hoping, some of these companies were hoping to be certified this year, but again, it slipped on till twenty-twenty-seven the same way that any aircraft is certified by the FAA, so will these. So it will be very safe by day one. In fact, they're still testing, um, we're, we're working on some other testing opportunities. Um, 'cause you can imagine the, the difference of like downdraft and updraft, like all the different things that come with an aircraft they're looking at. And so the FAA is not gonna let anything go into the sky that is not safe for the flying public.
Councilmember Clint Denon.
As I know that you know, and you know that I know, that noise in aircraft are, uh, something that's prohibitive and, and very difficult for us to deal with in the aviation industry. What has been the anticipated, what, this, the Aviation Authority and the state's reaction to the onslaught of noise complaints that's gonna be coming from these things? Have you guys been dealing with that?
So, two, yes, and I, yes, with your background, you know how noise is. So, um, I wish that the video could play because, um, these things are very quiet. In fact, Joby, actually, the CEO, does an ad where it's flying behind him, and he doesn't even have a microphone. He's just talking like this, and you can hear every word that he's saying because they are quiet. However, as you and I both know, the perception of noise.
If you see an airplane.
Yes, you believe that you can hear the airplane.
One hundred percent. Thank you, South Tampa.
Yes. And so the, that's one of the things that we'll work with, with the FAA on is, um, you know, obviously, just like we do with anything, we're about to have to, um, close down one of our runways to do some reconstruction. And so, you know, anytime that we do that, any of that stuff, we, we meet with the community and we work with the FAA on those things. So, um, more to come on that. That'll be, the FAA is, actually has a toolkit that they're putting together for communities 'cause this is not gonna be in every community to begin with. Um, Florida is poised to go probably second or third after California and New York, um, which is great. But it's, you know, this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to work with the locals on very much. And we'll be reaching out to all of you to get you all that, um, information out to your constituents as well.
It's crazy that, uh, over twenty years ago, I think I sat on the first work group in anticipation of all this happening. Now twenty years later, here we are, so that's.
I know, it's the Jetsons.
Yeah.
I have to go to Mr. Hartfield first, uh, Board Member Hartfield, and then Board Member Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Couple of questions for you, but not to put you on the spot.
Oh.
From a technology standpoint, can you speak to what the technology is behind, uh, developing this, this, this advanced technology? And how, you know, does it choose routes or there are fixed routes?
So it can go to any route. In fact, if, um, any of you have the Microsoft, um, Flight Simulator, this technology's actually on there. My husband's been flying them in our, um, in our living room. But it is, like, everybody has like their, their technology, their proprietary technology. I fly it better than Brett, who manages our three general aviation facilities, because I don't know how to fly a plane. I can play a video game. And so Brett crashes it because he is trying to fly it like a traditional aircraft, and I'm just playing a video game. So that, like, and that's where that partnership with the school system and HCC and some of, we are the number one state for flight training anyways, that it is a different type of flight training and all those other things. That's a great question. Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Second part. What, have, have, what opportunities are there, uh, to address mass transit with this technology?
So mass transit is, this is not gonna solve every problem. This is going to be at max like six passengers. And so, um, this really is more of those people who want to get somewhere fast. Um, I've seen some of the, some of the demonstrations that I went to, like in Chicago with it, were, um, people that wanna get home for a kid's soccer game. So it's not gonna be something that you use every week, but it might be something you use once a week. Again, emergency response, cargo, those types of things. So it's, but it's not going to solve the mass transportation problems. You're welcome.
Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to provide a little more color to, uh, Board Member Clint Denon's question about noise. As you know, we deal with noise all the time, uh, at the airport. But these particular vehicles, according to NASA acoustic tests, as well as Joby, about sixty-five decibels, which is average street level noise. So nothing that you would expect from, uh, you know, uh, helicopter with standard props. So certainly not your standard general aviation. And that's on takeoff and landing, so at about five hundred meters, right? So beyond that, you're talking about forty-five decibels. So just to give context to your question.
Two former air traffic controllers.
Councilmember Carlson.
People see these things and they're gonna instantly call and complain.
Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get together with you and ask all the geeky questions, but one. Council, Councilman Clint Denon reminded me, because he used to be an air traffic controller, about the flight corridors. So I've been on general aviation planes, and there was, there was a very narrow path east-west, directly across the, the, the landside terminal. And, you know, all that ties into FAA height requirements, um, you know, which the Aviation Authority's sitting as the, the board that, uh, that advises on that, can approve exceptions. So is, do you know what the flight corridors are, and is it gonna, is it gonna change the FAA height requirements in the, in, in any of the perimeters around the, uh, airports?
So we're working with the FAA on some of the test cases. So like, one of the routes that we have them looking at with Walpert is, um, like, the airport to Moffitt. What does that corridor look like? Because there are so many people who come from all over the world to seek cancer treatment at Moffitt Cancer Center only to sit in traffic on two-seventy-five for an hour and a half. And so we're starting to lay out those routes of what potential could look like because ultimately those routes are decided by the FAA, and those height restrictions will be decided by the FAA through integration as part of FAA reauthorization that Congress passed last year. Um, there were some directives on when to get all of that stuff done. So as always, the airspace will be regulated by the FAA, but we are nudging them along with some potential routes, again, using Walpert as the consultant to kind of map out what those point-to-points could look like.
Board Member Gray.
Thank you for your presentation. My question is, uh, you mentioned our Hillsborough County Public School District a few times, and I was very curious to, just to know, what, how do you, um, your, this particular project, which is huge, interfaces with our current technology officer, which we just hired, Michael Geddes. So I don't know if you've met him yet or not, but he started two weeks ago.
I, I've not had the chance to meet him yet, but, um, I've been talking to Kristin Davis and of course, the Superintendent Ayers, about what this could potentially look like for some, um, for some curriculum. Joby actually partnered with the New York City County, um, New York City Public Schools on some basic training. And so how can we replicate that here, potentially using a state grant to do it? So more to come, but we're, we're having those conversations.
Thank you.
Board Member Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A great presentation, Gina. Florida really is kinda leading in this space in, in many, many ways. So my assumption is really around kind of, it's gonna work on a series of hubs, apparently. And so, you know, as we're doing this, what are you seeing across the region or across the country on the other hub? So if we can take off from one spot, you know, where's the development of, of where we're gonna, what are we gonna be able to get to?
So that's a great question. Um, and I should've included that in this presentation, is that not every vertiport has to be a full vertiport the way that we think of air, traditional airport infrastructure. You think of traditional airport infrastructure, you need gates, you have concessions, you have all of these other things. You'll need big vertiports for the maintenance and for the, um, the, like, battery charging and all that other stuff. But one of the, um, the demonstrations that I went to, again, in Chicago, they used Blade Helicopter, and they landed in a parking lot that had a trailer with a Keurig in it, because that's all you need. They don't have the, you're not talking about refueling, you're not talking about catering, you're not talking about full staffing. You're not, you're not talking about these full onboarding processes. So you can have this series of different types of vertiports. So there'll be the big ones, there'll be smaller ones, there'll be some that, again, if you wanted to, to land at a park next to your house, like, in your neighborhood, it can do that. The range on these things to start will just, it'll increase with the battery technology. So for right now, it could probably go from Tampa to Orlando. So when you think about that range, and you think about the conversation you all just had, that, you know, that, that hour and a half on I-4 or one of these. And so when you start talking about that part of it, then you can build out a network, uh, of system. And again, the range will increase as the battery technology increases.
Okay, board members, any other final questions? Thank you, Ms. Dew.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate that. Next item is regional MPO peer exchange topic solicitation. Dr. Wong? Yes?
They have the video working. Do you mind if I play it real quick?
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead and say, here's the video. No, they're gonna play it on the webex.
Oh, okay, and here's the video. They're gonna play it on the webex, sorry. There's Joe. It's okay. It's okay, we don't, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're losing some people here in a few minutes. So regional MPO peer exchange topic solicitation, Dr. Wong.
Thank you once again, board. I'll be very quick. In mid-November, Hillsborough TPO staff have been invited to participate in a peer exchange with staff from other MPOs across the, across the nation that have previously merged. This peer exchange is being organized by the Federal Highway Administration and its research entity, the Volpe Center. The peer exchange is open to staff from the Hillsborough, Pasco and Pinellas MPOs, and it's going to give us an opportunity to interact one-on-one with staff from the MPOs that have experienced either a merger or a reorganization of some sort dating back to the nineteen nineties. Those experiences are not going to be identical to what is proposed for us. Uh, in some instances, these MPOs have merged out of regional planning councils that then became MPOs, or a non-TMA MPO merging with a TMA MPO. So it's not a straightforward comparison. However, I do think that there's an opportunity to learn about governance structure, staffing, recruitment efforts, planning outcomes, implementation timelines, executive management. There, there's a lot of information that we can receive from these MPOs based on their experiences. We have interviewed a number of these MPOs over the past couple of months, um, and we've narrowed it down to four that have similar enough experiences to provide us with information that could, uh, be valuable as we work through the merger process. Two of the four that are listed on the write-up will be selected and invited to Tampa to participate. One is the Lower Connecticut River, sorry, Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments in Connecticut, the Rio Grande Valley MPO in Texas, the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission in Vermont, and the Hampton Roads TPO in Virginia. Only staff will be invited to participate in this peer exchange, but we don't want to limit the access that you have to this info. And what I'm looking for today is a list of questions that you would like us to pass on to these other MPOs, and then we can report the results and the responses that we get from them to you at a future date. No actions required, but if you have any questions on your mind that you've been looking for an opportunity to ask, now would be a great time. Again, we have already organized the field trip to Metro Plan, you know that. The difference between this initiative and the Metro Plan field trip first is that Metro Plan was conceived as a multi-county MPO. It never went through a merger process. These MPOs have gone through something that, well, uh, they have gone through the process that is proposed for us. And the second is that the Metro Plan field trip will be elected official to elected official. This will be staff to staff. And so it provides a little bit of a unique twist on, on, um, learning from their experiences. So I'll end and open it up to you all. If you have any questions you'd like us to ask and report back, happy to entertain them.
Board members, Commissioner Cohen.
So I have two questions. The first, well, the first is really a suggestion to you, is that I think that if you're going to compare four case studies to one another, you ought to have some standardized set of questions that you ask of each of the four that are identical. You can customize it with things that are unique to each one, but I would definitely have some very standard questions that everyone gets the same question. And I think those things are obvious about local participation and about whether or not their advocacy level at the state level was enhanced by their experience, things like that. But the second thing that I would ask is specifically if Connecticut is going to be one of your comparisons, competitive, Connecticut has very, very weak counties. They have no county government at all, I think beyond like a sheriff. So I think it's really important to understand from them who makes the decisions when you have nobody that's speaking at a county level and all you have are like 110 different towns.
Councilmember Hurtig. Board members later.
Thank you. Just one question. Will Volpe develop a report from the peer exchange?
Yes, they will. We don't have a timeline yet. Of course, it would have been great to add that to the merger study and allow that report inform the next steps for us. Unfortunately, the timeline just didn't work out, but we will have access to preliminary info that's not been included in the final report, and we'll share that with you.
Great. Thank you.
Board Member Hurtfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Johnny, or Mr. Wong, I would probably advise that we come up with something that looks like a SWOT analysis and be able to bring that back to this board and talk through what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of a regional MPO of, one, doing the research and implementing and developing a regional MPO. I think that would be interesting to hear. Thank you.
Board member, Councilmember Clendenon.
My concern would be ensuring that we're apples to apples and that, kind of playing off on what Council, Commissioner Cohen just said, that it really is kind of a waste of time and energy if we're comparing areas that really do not politically look like what we're attempting to, you know, accomplish here, where we have, you know, Hillsborough, County, Pinellas, and Pasco, and then the municipalities, you know, the makeup that we have. So I would say just being really fiduciary responsible of how we spend our money and how we spend our time, that we need to make sure that it's going to actually have value added to the, to the application of what's happening in the tri-county area.
Board Member Gray.
Dr. Wong, I would suggest, you know, because each of these states experience climate change, we'll put it into a different word, incremental weather that has definitely incurred tremendous challenges transportation-wise, that perhaps we get their way of work, so to speak, as to how they deal with tremendous flooding, high winds, which is common in every one of these states, as we are now seeing more and more. So I would be curious about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, kind of two-part question. Number one is, what was the role of the broader community? And number two, what was the leadership structure inside and outside that helped with it? As Councilmember Clendenon mentioned, every city is a little bit different. I was involved with the Orlando Chamber at the time that the Central Florida Partnership was set up. And there's a whole model for why that happened and the region came together, but an example, Jake Stewart, who was the, you know, the reigning business leader for a long time in Orlando, he personally went around and met with the governments in the region and negotiated a collaborative model with them. But that also was tied to the efforts that they had to get their elected officials in leadership positions, like Dean Cannon, who became, I think it was Speaker, and others at the time. They, this is like mid-'90s. They were very powerful politically at the state level, but they also brought the business community and others together through real hard work where they had to sit down and talk to people. Another, the other thing about Orlando, though, is that, you know, we have St. Pete and Tampa and Clearwater, which are, from the St. Pete perspective, Clearwater perspective, equal in many ways. And so Orlando doesn't really have that. They have, you know, it's easier to create a collaborative model because it's in the center, kind of like Atlanta. The other, the only example that I'm aware of in our region that has worked on a regional basis is Tampa Bay Water. And that took Ed Turanich and Steve Seibert, Chair and Vice Chair of the organization, to go around and personally meet with all the six-member governments and negotiate deals. And that was really hard work that took a couple of years as well. But the point is that leaders stepped in and negotiated a collaborative model, working very closely with people on the ground at a detailed level. And because of that, because the underpinning was strong, the foundation was strong, these groups have lasted a long time. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I think we'll move right into Executive Director's report. Dr. Wong?
Thanks. You're probably tired of hearing from me by now. First is an update on the regional merger study that worked kicked off last Monday. We had a good, but eight-hour-long kickoff meeting with the consultant team and representatives from each of the MPOs. We discussed project management, organization, schedule, and some upcoming milestones. One milestone that I want to bring to your attention now is a principals workshop. We intend to invite officials from each of the governing bodies from across the tri-county area to participate in a workshop, tentatively for mid-November. We do have a couple of dates in mind, but I want to give you a heads up that our staff will be reaching out to see your availability for those dates. The intention of the principals workshop is to discuss the apportionment plan. Now, those of you who have been engaged in this conversation for some time, that may feel like we're taking a step backward because in late 2024, this board did agree to a preferred apportionment plan of 25 members, one seat, one vote, two seats reserved for regional operators, the port and the airport, and no transit representation. However, since this board took that action in December of last year, we have heard murmurs from other reps at the TMA and across the other two counties that maybe they don't feel the same way now that they did last winter. Because we have consultant support, we think it might be a valuable exercise to reaffirm the decisions that have already been made. And if there is no longer agreement, figure out what we need to do to get this, to identify an apportionment plan that works for the most number of people. Trust me, I'm well aware of the optics of taking a step back. We're trying to avoid that. However, at this point, there's really no avoiding that some members want to explore other options. Getting a little off track, just as a reminder, our staff will be reaching out, proposing a couple of dates in mid-November to invite you to that principals workshop, and then invitations will follow once we settle on the date. 7B, the SETPA TMA Leadership Group meeting will be September 26 at PSTA, and the next TPO regular meeting will be on September 10 next week. Happy to answer any questions that you all have. Regional merger study kickoff.
Thank you, Dr. Wong. Board members, other questions? Councilmember Clendenon.
As the, probably one of the more pessimistic members of the board on this process, I would caution you about using that word about the most, you know, majority, because this, if you're just shooting for a majority, it's doomed to fail. It needs to be a consensus or at least, you know, a supermajority of people to be able to. So I would caution you to be, get out of that mindset for ultimate destination. Thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Wong? Okay, is there any old or new business? One quick thing, I'd like to congratulate our colleague, Councilmember Clendenon, for his reelection to the DNC National Executive Committee. Congratulations, sir. Anything else? Any other new business, old business? Anything else to come before the board? Going once, going twice. Okay, if not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. See you next week.